Good evening, I would like to bring the September 21st, 2016 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call please, Ms. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle?
She is on her way, she's being detained for a minute.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. McGarvey?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Mr. Burns, can we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board in their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now hear our reports from our student representatives. I'd like to welcome Arianna Worth as our new student board representative, and I'd like to welcome back Katie Receiver.
Okay, so from the kindergarten, we've received that the kindergarten students attended the bus orientation on August 17th and 18th. Parents set up busing for their children. They had the opportunity to ride the bus route with their child. Both evenings were well-attended. The kindergarten office staff and instructional assistants provided childcare and helped create bus tags. The kindergarten open house was a great day for the students. Students and their parents met the teachers, dropped off their school supplies, and toured the building. The new air conditioning system made a building comfortable and cool for all visiting families.
On August 23rd, we held our student ambassador meeting at Glen Olden School with the PBIS team and Ms. Lambert. September 9th was the kickoff assembly and students had a class color spirit day. Our first graders came September 6th for orientation with their parents and had a special tour of our building. September 16th was our back-to-school barbecue. Students and families came out and met with the faculty to enjoy delicious food. September 22nd, we will hold our back-to-school night. Parents are invited to come out and hear all that will be happening at Glen Olden School for the upcoming school year. Meet with their children's teachers and see their classrooms.
From Prospect Park, they like to recognize the students who completed the summer work. They were rewarded with popsicles and an extra recess, where they were congratulated and encouraged to continue their hard work for the new school year.
Norwood held 6th grade orientation on September 1st. Sixth graders came in, went through a mock schedule, and became familiar with their lockers. First grade orientation was held the 6th. Parents and students were introduced to the staff and were treated to snacks by human school.
The start of the 2016-17 school year for Tencum School went off without a hitch. Thank you to everyone who helped make the first week of school a memorable one for our students. The Tencum School playground is absolutely amazing. We have never seen so many students from 1st to 8th grade using the equipment. It was a huge success. A very special thank goes to the school board, the Tencum Board of Commissioners, and the Philadelphia Airport for giving us the financial backing to make this playground a dream come true. Tencum School back-to-school night is September 27th. Our teachers and students are busy working to make this fun and an educational event for all of their families.
On August 11th, the Interboro High School marching band performed at the annual Ocean City baby parade. Everyone seemed to enjoy the day. The teachers returned excited and rested to start the new school year on August 29th. Welcome back and have a wonderful year. 9th grade orientation was held September 2nd. All 9th graders were given a tour with their senior mentors and provided pizza. Welcome class of 2020, we look forward to a great four years with you. This concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Receiver and Ms. Worth, great job. Recognition, Ms. Riley?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. At this time, could I ask the board members to please have a seat down in the audience? Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for coming this evening. Interboro School District recognizes that working closely with our police departments is paramount to providing a safe and supportive learning environment for our students. The Interboro Board of School Directors and administrators value these relationships that we have developed with our police departments and maintained over time. Your willingness to work with our administrators and students, your participation in school activities, and your visibility in our schools does not go unnoticed. Tonight, we have invited our police chiefs from our four local communities to be recognized for their support of our schools. On behalf of the district, please accept these plaques as a token of our appreciation for your continued support and service to the students, staff, and communities of the Interboro School District. At this time, I will call up each of the police chiefs and the municipality leaders who've joined them here tonight, and our board members from each of the communities to take a picture, receive the plaque, and be recognized for their support. Police Chief Jay Kelly and Mayor Quinn, please come up. Chief Del Vecchio from Norwood Police Department. And, Mr. Evans. Chief Engel from Prospect Park and Councilman Bob Jerk. You have a lot of administrators in the picture. And for Tencum Township, we have Chief Edmiston and Commissioner Pat McCarthy. So on behalf of the district, thank you so much for coming this evening. We appreciate your continued support and we look forward to a very safe school year. Thank you for coming.
Okay, moving on, let's move on to public comments. Mr. Burns?
We have a few public comments tonight. President Phelps, starting off with Ms. Kay Caruso from Prospect Park.
I am Kay Caruso from Prospect Park, 646 Ninth Avenue. And last month, I was here kind of to complain and bring up some concerns about the parking lot and the buffer that was dying. After the meeting, Dr. Riley and I sat and chatted for a while, and she assured me that everything would be taken care of. As it turns out, she's absolutely correct. The dead bushes have been removed as of yesterday. The grass has been cut. The bushes were trimmed as of today. I understand from Dr. Riley that they are going to be going to one of the local, actually it's red bud nursery, to pick out some plants that will fill in the dead spaces. I want to thank Mr. Wahlhoff for all of his help. He was absolutely wonderful through all of this. And if I, I don't know what Kevin's last name is. I talked about a tree, a red bud, that was dying, and Kevin was out there watering that tree several times. I was so impressed that he took to heart what I had said. Mr. Wahlhoff also put out two green bags that are for water around that tree and another tree, and I'm so excited about that too. Doesn't take much to make me excited. And, let's see. And again, I want to thank Dr. Riley, Mr. Wahlhoff, and Kevin for honoring the commitment that the board made to the zoning board to maintain that buffer. And the last thing I want to say is mostly to Mr. Wahlhoff. Yesterday, we chatted for a couple minutes, and he, the last thing he said was, "We're going to honor our commitment to the community because we want to be a better neighbor." And I thank you very much for that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso. Next person, Mr. Burns?
Ms. Gahisha McKinley from Glen Olden.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Gahisha McKinley. I am kind of new to the neighborhood. I live in Glen Olden on 123 North Wells Avenue. And my concern is, I'm here for my son. He actually a new student at Interboro High School. I live where there is like a cutoff area, and they don't provide transportation. And I want to go walk on my normal route just to see how long the distance was before he started school. It is like a 40-minute walk. So I reached out to different people in the building in the first three days of school. I didn't really get no resolution to my situation, but I finally did speak to a couple people. I spoke to George, and he was a part of the transportation because Bill wasn't there. He had a family emergency. And then I also asked to reach out to the superintendent, which I did speak to her. I didn't get a resolution to my situation. My concern, because it's like a 40-minute walk, if the school would provide transportation for him, or if they don't, do they have like sep-ta-bus or a token that they can give to him every day? Because it's costing me money to send him to school. And then I thought it was going to be like a safety concern, because if it's 40 minutes and it's on the main way of the highway where he would have, not highway, intersections where it's more busy. And then, in the wintertime, it would delay him from getting to school if people don't shovel or snow, you know? And I think it was like more of a dangerous situation. That's why I wanted to know if the school could set up means. For one of my other kids that goes to Tencum, they have a bus that picks them up at the end of my block, but they actually go to the, past the high school. So when I did talk to George, his outlook was, "I'm one of the 12 callers in that area where the cutoff is that this transportation situation affects." And I was like, "Well..." And they said, "You have to live, you have to be 2.0 miles in order for the school to be able to help." Now, my only concern, because I didn't want him to have latenesses and things like that, if they could like give a token, or if they don't have tokens for kids, or can they get a discount for his bus situation? Because there's no other means. And other parents that lived on my block, they actually drive. But the ones that my son lives on, they don't go pick up at the same time as them in the morning. Ones in like 12th grade. And they're start mornings like 8:30 in the morning. So my only concern is that that situation never got resolved. And since school started, he's been nine times late for school. And I'm like trying to get him up earlier, but I just wanted to know because it's a safety issue. Forty minutes, I think, is a long walk for somebody to walk to school. And then nobody could tell me, like, "Do you guys offer bus tokens or anything to help him get there? Where is the next step?" And it's pretty much like, I'm not the only parent, because 12 parents called the school district. I'm pretty new to the district, so I don't know all the other parents. I was just concerned about my kid getting to school every day before even school started. So I'm like, now I don't know where to go for, far as transportation or resources. So I said, "If you guys don't provide transportation or resources, is there a charter school he can go to for outer district placement?" Said, "We'll provide the transportation so he can go to school and come home at a reasonable time without anybody guessing what time it would take him to go to school in the morning." And I gave him different scenarios. I live closer to the Royal Farms, like around the back of that, and he got to walk from there to this high school every day. I think it's a long walk. I literally tried to walk with him, and I ended up catching a cab. And when I called Uber, the price range is $9 for my house to there. So that was my only concern. That's why I'm here today, because I never got a resolution towards trying to set up transportation for him. And I called different people, and they're basically turning the phone call away into another person. The guidance counselor said, "When you meet at the board meeting, see where you're going to get from there." So I don't know. You know, I just wanted to know if the district's main concern should be the safety and the well-being of a child, especially if a parent's reaching out saying that, "I think it's a long commute, and it has to be that 2.0 miles in order for somebody to help." So that's why I'm here today. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. McKinley, for your comments. The only thing I can say to you is that you'll have to take this up with the superintendent after-
I did. I actually spoke to her, and she said for me to contact George, and she said she was going to back to me, but she never did. So that's why I'm here today, because I didn't get no resolution. And school's already in session. I left many messages, even with her secretary, Margaret. I spoke to Jim. I spoke to George. I'm new to the school district. We only came there when there was only two months of school left. And my kid is new to the high school, so I want to find out from the board what is my next step, because I think I did everything possible I can do so far to find out a resource.
Well, again, like I said, after the meeting, you'll have to talk to the superintendent because-
I did, I did, I did.
After the meeting, you'll have to talk to the superintendent and find out what the- I don't know the policies right off the top of my head.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have to see if there's something that we can do for you or not.
Okay.
But after the meeting, see the superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Okay. I just came from work, and that's the reason why he's a little rowdy. Just came from daycare. He don't like to sit for too long.
That's no problem.
Run, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burns, any other names?
Next, we have Mr. Zerdi Dobi from Lester.
Zerdi Dobi from Tencum. Number 12.5, the expense for that, that's a college education, Ivy League college education. I'd like you to explain why the expense for that school is what it is. That's a lot of money. What, I mean, what are they providing to the student?
Mr. Dobi, that is services that is involving an IEP. So I don't know. I know you're right, it is expensive, but we don't have a lot of choice in the matter.
Okay. So then, would you give a brief description of what that school provides? What kind of services that school provides?
I can't get into that.
Okay, you provide a public education. They provide a-
Special service.
Education? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Number 15.2, 15.3, and 19, which are all together. Now, the split dollar issue was implemented back in 1998. And the ones that you are now having, you know, you've been paying these insurance premiums over the years. A number of the recipients have passed or died, and I don't know whether the school district has had the reimbursement for the premiums paid out by the school district. So on number 19, why are you hiring an additional consultant when you already know the facts of all these split dollars? What service is this person providing for that, for $3,000? It wasn't done in previous boards, so now what is the necessity for it now?
Mr. Dobi, this is public comment. If you have a question like that, you need to bring it to the superintendent. Okay?
This is the public meeting.
I know, it's a public comment.
You're going to vote on it tonight. You know, that's an excuse, so you don't have to answer the question. I mean, that's not right. Okay. Last night, at the workshop meeting, it was mentioned that the split, I mean, the settlement agreement and the payment from item number 3C from the airport was made to the school district. And an issue raised as to where that 600 and some thousand dollars is in the budget. This year's budget, last year's budget? Do you have an answer tonight?
Yes, I do, Mr. Dobi.
Okay, what is that answer?
The payment has, for 2015 and 16, was, it was uncertain during the budget process in the spring of 2015, if the agreement would be signed and the money received. But when we did receive it, since it was not budgeted for, it was considered to be funds received over and above the budgeted revenue for 2015-16. Excuse me. So the payment received for 2015-16 went into the general fund balance. Now, the payment for this year was included in the budget because it had already been set up, and we knew that we would be receiving it.
Okay. So the amount of deficit that you have continues as of tonight. That settlement agreement, I asked last night, again, Mr. Burns decided to comment briefly on it. And I want to correct the err that he has fallen into with the former school board director, Phyllis Floyd. And he said that it was an agreement between three parties last night. This is what the top of the airport settlement agreement says. So it says four-party agreement, okay? So it's between four parties. Now, under number 3C, he also said that the agreement says that, you know, it's set and you can't change it. Well, here's what it says for 3C. "The taxing authorities covenant that in the event of any dispute among them concerning the allocation of the fixed payment, they shall not involve the city in any way, whether by interpleader or otherwise." So that is the entrance which you have, Mr. Burns, and members of the board, to go and attempt to recover the more than $800,000 you have lost this year, and the $800,000 you lost last year, which it means that you're lacking $1.6 million of money, which is being lost at a daily rate of more than $2,000 a day. Now, the reason I continue to bring this up is that this has precedence. This happened before. This is the agenda for April 19th, 2006. I'm going to read to you the motion. "Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached proposal with Tencum Township regarding parcel 450001806-00, aka Lazardo property, and waiving of real estate taxes due on the property for the fiscal year 2005-2006, and the district's use at no cost of the property for educational purposes in the future." Now, that property, the loss of that money was more than $29,000. And the board under-
Mr. Dobi, I-
You're not going to let me finish?
You're over five minutes, sir.
Well, this is an important issue, sir.
I know, and I hear everything you're saying, and-
Well, I know you're not going to do anything about it, but can I finish?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, do we have anybody else on the list?
One other person, Ms. Phyllis Floyd from Prospect Park.
Phyllis Floyd from Prospect Park. First of all, once again, after last night, Mr. Dobi saying that the board, this board, previous board, is a failure, again, I'm going to reiterate, none of you are a failure because of this airport agreement. What it is, is Mr. Dobi does not understand the legal aspect of a binding agreement or contract. And as he quoted, "The city of Philadelphia has nothing to do with the dispersment. It's the three taxing bodies. And how they reached that decision, whether it was a good decision or a bad, when the fact of the matter is, signed, sealed, and delivered. And we cannot, unless all three parties are in agreement, change anything in regards to that. And it will cost, what he feels would be a savings, it would cost in legal fees to challenge it. So therefore, I would like to know if Mr. Dobi has gotten his law degree as yet, or if he's just, you know, expressing his opinion and trying to make it factual. Once again, the board should not feel his comments take them serious as far as being failures. You're not, and I don't feel I was when I was on the board. So thank you for that. I have a statement that I'm going to read, and if my answers can please be, if my questions can be answered. "I wanted to bring to your attention several times that have been a concern of mine. If any one of you can please get the detailed information that I have been trying to get, but I am usually told by administration, the superintendent, they will get back to me, or they will look into the matter. Keep in mind that the public only has three opportunities to speak to the board at five minutes each time. When I sent a message to the board to see if they had any information regarding a situation- When I sent a message to the board to see if they had any information regarding a situation, I was told personnel matters are confidential and the public would be informed when action is to be taken. I find it interesting that I was made to feel that I was starting rumors, however, I was trying to find out if what I was told was in fact a rumor or not. From the response I received, it seems that the superintendent started this rumor when she received information from another superintendent. The unfortunate thing is, our superintendent did not keep this information confidential between her and her colleagues."
Mrs. Floyd, Mrs. Floyd, Mrs. Floyd, could you please address your questions?
I am.
To, no, to the, to our agenda. You, you, you're way off track.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not. Last evening I asked...
Please keep your questions to our agenda. Mr. Dobie, you, you, you have to sit down. You, you can't call port of order. Mr. Dobie, please sit down. Mr. Dobie, Mr. Dobie, you had your five minutes. Bring it up at the next meeting, sir. Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Floyd, please keep your questions to the agenda. Thank you.
Last evening I asked if the information that was promised to me and the board three weeks ago would be given out. Mrs. Riley stated that the amount of lunch money not collected for the last several years and the status of summer school attendance, and if all the students were paid in full, was being, uh, I was told it was being worked on three weeks. Mr. Dobie did bring up a very good point regards to the airport settlement check that we are supposed to receive yearly for the next twenty years. And uh, it was addressed tonight when he brought it up again, as far as it was put in the general fund. How come we came up with a deficit? And how come nobody realized that until Mr. Dobie brought that question up?
I knew that, Mrs. Floyd, but I didn't want to answer because I wanted to make sure my facts were straight. Thank you.
Okay, does the rest of the board know where that money is? I hope so. Tonight, there are temporary positions being approved. No requirements or experience was necessary other than they are in the secretaries group and work presently at administration. I find it strange that a few other positions that were temporary are now uh, being made uh, permanent without the board's approval. The board approved several positions in the thirty-two BJ group. The superintendent reversed the board's decision to avoid the grievance going to the board level. The board should look into this situation to make sure there are no unfair labor practices, okay? Things that you, the board, approved and agreed with. Who was going to take what position for who, was retiring, and what have you. That was changed, in case you weren't aware of it. And uh, this district is starting this school year with a one point two million deficit. Cuts were made, individuals furloughed, over a million dollars was the savings, we were told. When I saw that numerous individuals have been recalled, I asked, what was the savings now? I was told the same amount. I, I just don't understand that. It was not explained very well as far as, you know, you furlough people and, in fact, these people were told, these people were told that they would be recalled come September because the positions were going to be necessary. So, where's the money? Where's the money? Where's the savings?
Are you through, Mrs. Floyd?
No, I didn't get an answer.
It's public comment. Make your comments.
Oh, first it's public comment, then it's questions only, now it's back to public comment. When do we get our answers? How do we get our answers?
I explained that all to you the other night.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. I told you there were three new positions out of all the positions that were being filled. All the rest of them were not new, they were just being refilled. It was people that were leaving, we brought in the ones that were furloughed. There's only three new positions. And I explained that to you the other night, didn't I?
There's so many explanations...
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. You're like seven minutes now.
Excuse me, I was interrupted.
And I know, and you're over seven minutes now, so please wrap it up.
Okay, um, I just hope that the board is seeing a pattern here as far as what they know, what they don't know, on a need-to-know basis, and um, you know, what is fair and what is unfair. And when it gets into the law, there are times when this board is questionably in violation of the law, and especially the sunshine law.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Burns, is there any other names on the list?
That was the last one. And, and just for the clarification, I, I, as I do at every meeting, I read the names in order of the people that are signed on the sheet. I, I did that tonight. So, um, just want everyone to know that if you sign in, whatever order you sign in, that's how I read the, the, the public comments. Well, I'm, I'm holding it right, it is true, and, and I'm holding it right here. Well, yes, sir.
But it, it...
No, I, I couldn't hear what you said. Your name is before Phyllis Floyd's.
All right, let's uh, move along here. Uh, number five, the minutes, Mr. Burns?
Number five, five point one and five point two. I'm gonna read them individually and we can do it collectively. Five point one, motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on July twentieth, two thousand sixteen be approved. Five point two, motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on August seventeenth, two thousand sixteen be approved.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, motion carries nine zero.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Uh, yes, Mr. Eckert.
It's the beginning of the school year and um, can we release the student reps down at this end, please?
Uh, yes, we can. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, Mr. Eckert. Uh, you, uh, girls could be dismissed, the board reps. Thank you, uh, Ms. Receiver or Ms. Wirth. And number six, Ms. Meehan, the solicitor's report?
There is no solicitor's report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Meehan. Uh, number seven, Mr. Burns?
Uh, number seven, financial. Uh, motion seven point one, again, I'm gonna read these individually and we can vote collectively. Motion that the attached treasures report for the month ending August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen be approved. And seven point two, motion that the fund dispersments in the amount of fourteen million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-five cents be approved.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Uh, correspondence, is there any correspondence, Mr. Burns?
Not, no correspondence tonight.
Okay, number nine, committee reports. Uh, Mr. Evans, you're up first, nine point one.
Good evening. The finance committee meeting was commenced at six oh five PM in the boardroom at the administration building. Mr. High School presented the committee with a preliminary financial statement current as of August thirty-first, twenty sixteen. He also provided an update on the status of capital projects. Mr. High School provided information on the multifunction printed devices along with a proposed timeline for renewal and replacement with the hope of having a final proposal ready for the October board meeting. The current lease agreement will end in January, twenty seventeen. He also brought up discussion about the need to renew a contract for postal services recommending Pitney Bowes, but we're still waiting uh, their proposal. Uh, Board President William Phelps appointed an audit committee consisting of board members Mike Burns, Justin Chavone, and Jack Evans. And the finance committee meeting was adjourned at six thirty PM. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Uh, nine point two, GBO meeting, uh, Mr. Eckert?
Thank you. The GBO meeting was held immediately following the finance committee. There were three items on the agenda. The first was the Prospect Park Playground Equipment presented by Mr. Woolhoff. The project is to add some handicap accessibility equipment at the Prospect Park Elementary School to be paid through bond fund surplus to be approved for tonight's agenda. The second, travel trainer presented by Mr. Paul Gibson and Mr. Paul Corin. This is for life skills program at the high school to be approved again for tonight's agenda. And the third was a district copier update presented by Mrs. Aggerty. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Uh, nine point three, Mr. Burns, legislative update?
There's a few minor things I just want to touch on first. A couple of House bills that are just presently in committee. One is, we hear a lot about assessments and, and testing scores that are gonna be coming out, and I will touch on that in a second, but this is just a minor graduation requirement that's just being floated in the committee right, in the education committee right now, um, requiring, right now, the way the legislative is writ, legislation is written. It's uh, House Bill eighteen fifty-eight, and it's requesting that in order to graduate, students must correctly answer at least sixty percent of questions that are listed on the test identical to the civics portions of the naturalization test for U.S. citizenship. So, an interesting caveat to graduation requirements that is in discussion. There's also House Bill twenty-two ninety-two, which is expanding upon possible sus-suspendable or um, offenses that one could be expelled for. I think it's in, probably in response to the bullying legislation that we talked about earlier in the summer that was passed. There's also been a lot of discussion, and there was a, on July twenty-ninth, um, I didn't mention it in the August meeting, the transcript wasn't yet available. Uh, it did read through the transcript, there's two hundred and thirty-nine pages, and there was a pretty in-depth presentation from the House Committee, the Education Committee to the House about PA state assessments and the direction for assessment testing in the future. So, we'll certainly keep an eye on that as well. Another thing to note is, the legislation panel formed a bipartisan committee. It's an after-school, a look at after-school programs, and it mainly focuses on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So, there is some push, not only to have some things addressed within the school, but also after-school as well. One of the items that was in the Senate that was to be voted on possibly this week was pulled. That was House Bill nineteen ninety-three, which has an effect on tax assessments and the school board's ability to take appeals on tax assessments. It's really important. I know we have a budget situation that we have talked about, and I, on a personal note, I'm glad to see that that was taken off the agenda because I think it's, does a disservice to the school board and to the community. And just touching on a couple of things finally. One case that I had mentioned in the past, and I've mentioned it a few times, the William Penn School District is part of a, a collaboration in, in bringing a suit against the Pennsylvanian Department of Education. On September thirteenth, it was heard down in City Hall. It was uh, very heavily attended. And um, the main issue right now that the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania is focusing on is whether or not the court has jurisdiction to hear this matter. So, it is under advisement right now, and as soon as there's an update, I will provide it. And then finally, another hot issue that I'm sure we're gonna be talking about a lot this year is charter schools. And one charter school in New York and another charter school here in Pennsylvania in King of Prussia went through the National Labor Relations Board in two cases. And ultimately, the Labor Relations Board deemed them to be private corporations that receive public funding and not public institutions. And that's a, it's a huge step in the circumstances as it relates to charter schools. So, again, I think it's something that we need to be aware of, and I'm certainly going to be reporting on it as things develop with the charter school circumstance.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Uh, nine point four, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Chavone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we did not meet this month, however, Delaware County Community College will be hosting a school board appreciation night, October twenty-sixth at six PM, and all board members are invited to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Uh, nine point five, Delaware County IU, Mr. Harris?
Okay, I have names to read here, so if I butcher anybody's name, I apologize in advance. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on September seventh, two thousand sixteen. Thirteen school districts have approved the election of the following two served members as members on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board Directors from July first, two thousand sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Chester Upland, Charles Warren, Radner, Patricia Booker, Ridley, Harry, Mick Elway, Southeast Delco, Edward McBride, and most important, Interboro, Edward Harris. That would be me. Approved, also approved was the appointment of Shelley Fiola as the new assistant executive director. Also approved, an appointment of Mr. Tom Brown as chief financial and operating officer. Also approved administrator, administrator, the pre-school early, oh, let's try this again. Approved the administrator, the preschool, early intervention performance grant. And finally, to approve a con, continue the contract with career through culinary arts program. For more news and happenings, just go to DCIU.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, moving on, number ten, personnel, uh, Mr. Burns?
Motion that the following person, personnel actions be approved, ten point one through ten point twelve.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Number eleven, Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, eleven point one through eleven point three.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Number twelve, Office of Special Education and Pupil Services, motion that the following items be approved, twelve point one through twelve point eleven.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number thirteen, Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, thirteen point one and thirteen point two.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Number fourteen, Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved, fourteen point one through fourteen point five.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Uh, yes, Mr. Burns?
I'm going to be abstaining from voting on number fourteen?
Entirety of it?
Yeah, and I, I didn't parse them out because I would just do it generally.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and one abstention there. Uh, next motion, Mr. Burns? Sorry, motion carries eight zero with one abstention.
At number fifteen, Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, fifteen point one through fifteen point four.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number sixteen, motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached invoice from PSBA for the board docs renewal for the period of July first, two thousand sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen in the amount of two thousand seven hundred dollars paid from district fund.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Number seventeen, motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached revised Interboro School Calendar for the year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, school year. This is a roll call vote.
Second. Uh, the motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. D Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Number 18, motion that the Board of School Directors approve the memorandum of understanding with the Interboro Education Association for the Middle School Foreign Language Program, and this is a roll-call vote.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Number 19, motion that the Board of School Directors approve JR Burke of the Perspective Financial Group LLC for consulting services on split-dollar life insurance not to exceed $3,238.75 paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
A comment?
Yes, Mr. Burns.
Just as a clarification from earlier, this isn't a new item that we're undertaking. This was something that was from boards of past that was outstanding business, and we're just rectifying that this evening. Just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any other comments?
Just to clarify that-
Mr. Eckert?
Sorry, Mr. President. I started before you recognized me, I apologize. Just to piggyback what Mr. Burns said, this, this is an issue that has been going on for many years. It's a motion and a, an action that took place many years ago. There's a lot of legal issues involved in this, a lot of different parties involved in this, and it's, and it's still going to be a continued issue because there are still active policies out there that go with this. This particular motion is to pay for consulting fees, to answer questions for us, and to guide us into what our next move should be, and also, you know, the follow-through on certain things on which we have to make decisions on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine zero. Is there any old business? Hearing none, is there new business? Hearing none, Ms. Riley, our superintendent, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, I do have one. I am very excited to announce to the community that Interboro High School is a winner of the 2016 State Farm Youth Advisory Board Grant for $98,300. This grant will be used to enhance the Interboro Aquaponics Lab. There were more than 750 applications for the grant, and Interboro was one of 63 proposals accepted. We are thrilled to be partnering with State Farm as they are committed to empowering students promoting service learning and impacting communities. I invite the community to join us at Interboro High School's homecoming football game on Friday, October 7th, at South Avenue, as we will officially be receiving the recheck during the halftime festivities. I would like to thank Dr. Ekman and Mr. Avitable for their, for their work on the grant, the high school administration, Mr. Joe Fisher, and Mr. Tom Spears for the work that they do on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. That is fantastic news, great job, guys. We really appreciate that. Okay, is there any comments from the board members? No comments, okay. Moving on, on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, a finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the administration building. On Wednesday, October 12th, 2016, a special meeting of the board will be held at 6:30 PM in the Norwood School Library for the purpose of discussing the PSSAs. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the boardroom of the administration building on Tuesday, October 18th, 2016, at 6:30 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, October 19th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. And I would just like to congratulate our football team, 3-0. We're doing, they're doing a great job out there, okay? And meeting adjourned. Thank you.